Okay, having reached the hour of six o'clock, we'll get started. Councilman Proctor, can you identify that we have with us a quorum?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, I would ask Lonnie Waters, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Lord, as we bow here tonight to give you thanks for all things and watch over this meeting, and let it be the first meeting of the new year, Lord, we're looking for good things to come. Lord, COVID is on a rampage, seems like, but there's the other significance, other people in the community that have different things that's an ailment with them. Lord, we just ask you to watch over all of them, watch over everyone as we go through the coming year. We ask you these blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. And Councilman Looney, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please, sir?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have an agenda in front of us. I think that that has been delivered to all, and I would at this time accept, entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
No move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Poked, same. It was adopted. Counsel, I would entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the December the 7th of 2020 regular council meeting and the December the 14th, 2020 special call meeting as they have been presented to you in your package.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
And a second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same. Motion carries and the minutes are adopted. At this time, we have a presentation of some city employees that are retiring and deserve our recognition. So we would like to recognize Cliff Fisher with 19 years of service to us, Charles Allen for serving us, and Virgil Chastain for his 19 years of service to Jasper. And I think Jimmy Howard is going to be retiring today, as a matter of fact, with 21 years of service. And I think that was the expression. So I have the last, you were viewing that last one that had a great saying on there, and if you did not catch it, I am so sorry. Wait, it's back. So, "Great is the beginning, but greater is the art of ending." Henry Wadsworth Longfellow. Haven't heard Longfellow in a day or two, so I appreciate the opportunity to read that. Thank you, Brandon. And thank these wonderful people who have worked with us in our city for so many years.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I do want to commend Tara Benson for putting that together, and I wish I could take credit for the quote, although she sourced it. I just merely kind of put it all together. Thanks, Tara.
Thank you, Tara. Under item seven, old business, consideration of ordinance number 2020-29 and 2020-30, request of an annexation of article number JA08042 and JA08042.001 at 855 North Main and North Main Street to R3 into the city of Jasper. And Brandon, I think you might be wanting to bring some information to us about that request.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, and for the public, the applicant did reach out to staff a couple hours ago, about an hour and a half ago, and did request in writing to table this matter that is before you this evening. It is staff's goal and intention to reach out to the applicant this week, secure a meeting, and try to get things ready for the February 1st.
So Counsel, I would entertain a motion to table this until sometime in the future, table until our next meeting. Brandon, would that be appropriate? Okay, so we'll table this until next meeting. I entertain a motion to table.
If we table this item?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table. Any discussion? Any human discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is tabled. Under Article 7, item B, consideration approval of alcohol license for BP585 LLC, a stop and shop located at 585 East Church Street. We would ask Lindsey to bring this to us, if you please.
You, Mayor and Counsel, we're just asking, the stop and shop that you just located at 585 East Church Street has met all the requirements and done all the advertising that y'all approved last month, and we're just asking for you to consider the approval of their alcohol license, the final approval for it.
Thank you, Lindsey. Counsel, this will be final approval on this, on item B, and entertain a motion for final approval?
I make a motion that we have the final approval for the alcohol license.
And could I hear a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion by Counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same. The license is granted. Under Article 8, new business, item 8 is consideration approval for the legal services agreement for general services as city attorney for the city of Jasper for David Siphon from Holsey, Alprin, and Mahar, I hope I pronounced that correctly, LFP is city attorney, and for the manager of the city managing to execute better of contract for 2021. So I want to commend Councilman Siphon for not running, since we have imposed upon him greatly this past year, in my opinion, and it is just one, but in my opinion, he has done a wonderful work forward. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to, for approval of his contract for 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by Counsel?
No, I appreciate everything he's done as well, Mayor. I think we've made the right choice and appreciate all of his help this year with, for us.
Thank you, Ann. I agree with you totally. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
I just wanted to say to the Mayor and Counsel for having me on for another year. I enjoy working with y'all and enjoy helping the city.
Thank you, David. We appreciate that. Under item B, consideration of ordinance 2021-01 for the adoption of the amendment of Chapter 94, City of Jasper zoning ordinance, zoning map, and the addition of Chapter 95 signs, code of the city of Jasper by ordinance 2021-02. Then if you will bring this to us.
Yes, sir.
Good-looking map that Lonnie's holding up there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, you may recall that during the last meet, staff and crew, you all obliged to table this matter specifically to allow for us to get a zoning map update to coincide with the zoning update. In consultation with Mr. Siphon, it did appear that it would be best for the city and for the community if we were to essentially revisit this item as a new business item. Although the contents of the zoning information that had been shared with you all in November and December, the substance in and of itself has not changed. To make sure that we don't run into any issues, that we have defects in our zoning, it was best to begin the process again where we would consider ordinance for the zoning ordinance amendment, text amendments, along with the zoning map and the sign ordinance. We would go back through the public hearing process at the Planning and Zoning Commission January 26th, and this item should be ready for your final consideration at your February 1st meeting. Rebecca Kiefer is on board our CPL. Her and Mr. Siphon have spent many hours just poring through the zoning ordinance to ensure that it's about as good as in its final place as it could be. Mr. Siphon or Rebecca, if there's anything specifically that you'd like to bring out that there may have been some sort of substantive change or something that had not been previously brought to the Counsel's attention, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to kind of just ask if they just chime in.
Hello?
Please do.
I don't know if Rebecca wants me to go first or her to go first, but from my viewpoint, the final of the ordinance is still basically what we'd gone over with the Counsel in November and December. We did tighten and clarify divisions, but in my mind, there was no substantive changes of a major nature, and so the ordinance still reflects our prior discussions with the Counsel.
Absolutely, yeah. So I can run down a really just quick summary of, you know, an exhaustive list of the changes that have been made between, I think, December and now. One, just simple enough, adoption dates have been changed to reflect the adoption, potential adoption in February. For the Central Business District, for residential lots, we have a minimum lot requirement for that to put essentially a density requirement, so that's 5,000 square feet. We updated and added to the conditional use factors to add some of the amendment factors for the review and approval procedures, added an evergreen tree appendix, some minor just kind of belligerent amendments, and then, and lastly, removed the requirement to update the official zoning map with every rezoning and have simplified that process a little. So other than that, of course, to this first reading, we've added the official zoning map. And then in Chapter 2, just to kind of clean up other chapters, in Chapter 2, you have the introduction of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Planning and Zoning Board, to be consistent with the planning commission that we use in the new zoning and sign ordinances, we've just stricken that and made reference to a planning commission instead. And then for the Zoning Board of Appeals, since those reviews are going to go through city council now, then we have just stricken that body from Chapter 2 entirely in that text. And then no changes to the sign code, and then, of course, the addition of the official zoning map as part of the first reading. And so just really quickly, what we'll do, a planning commission on the 26th would be run through the criteria for text amendments, again, through that process, and then come back to you on the first and run through that zoning criteria through an amendment or a memo to that effect. So that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do need a motion to approve the introduction of the new zoning ordinance and the new sign ordinance and the zoning map, as well as the changes referenced by Rebecca in, I believe, Chapter 2. So we do need that motion to approve the introduction of those ordinance.
Counsel, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve as stated by our very, very able city attorney.
Mayor, Counsel, if Siphon, if I could get your opinion on that, the zoning ordinance, the sign ordinance, and the zoning map, do they all three need a motion, or can they be collective?
Collective, I think.
The zoning map is included as part of the zoning ordinance. So we don't need a separate one of there. I've done an adoption ordinance, because what Rebecca did was draw up the zoning ordinance and draw up the sign ordinance as they would appear in the code. So when you go to MUNICODE, that's what you'd see, but it doesn't have the typical adoption language where, you know, we reference the introduction of tonight's meeting and have a space for advertising and a space for the planning commission meeting, I would hearing, and then the actual passage on February 1st. So I've done an adoption ordinance both for the zoning ordinance and the sign ordinance, and that's what the motion should include or approve, the introduction of both those ordinances that are the adopting ordinance.
And that is the ordinance 2021-01?
Yes. And also 2021-02. Once the zoning ordinance, once the sign ordinance, what Rebecca did, which I think is very astute, is that she pulled out the sign ordinance from the zoning ordinance, even though it's a form of a zoning ordinance, because sign ordinances can draw a lot of challenges. So if we draw a First Amendment challenge for some reason, and the court finds the sign ordinance invalid or violating the First Amendment, it doesn't then revoke our zoning regulations that are now in a separate chapter. So that was a very thing that Rebecca did, to separate out the sign ordinance from the zoning ordinance, in that we could have legal challenges in the future to one or both, but now if we run into a problem with the sign ordinance or zoning regulations would still be in full force and effect. That's probably more than y'all wanted to know, but so we got two adoption ordinances that you need a motion now to approve, the ordinances 2021-01 and 2021-02.
Mayor, I make a motion for the approval of ordinance 2021-01 and ordinance 2021-02.
Including all changes?
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, or the first reading of the adoption of amendments 2021-01 and 21-02, including changes that were given to us tonight. So have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion by Counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. First reading is adopted. Item C, consideration approval of the city of Jasper's Development Department application checklist for rezoning and annexation applications. And I have to bring that to Brandon and Council members, Dr. Proctor and Council member Kurt Redfield.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. And if Dr. Proctor and Mr. Raffield will allow me, I'll just kind of tee it up in terms of what this is exactly. Currently, from an operations standpoint, this is what you all have become familiar with by way of an application for someone who has requested to annex or rezone a piece of property. And you can tell the information that's on the application doesn't afford a lot of information other than the specifics about the owner, the applicant, the address, parcel number, and the reason. Although the new zoning ordinance does afford staff the opportunity to essentially set a checklist, so to speak, of what's expected, you all are the ultimate say-so in regards to what is, I guess, voted on. So I think it's important that we deviated a little bit, and this is an operational issue, but I'm wanting it to be almost a policy talk, that when persons come into the development office, in order for them to get, I guess, past the point of, you know, seeking approval to ask, so to speak, there should be a number of things that they provide to us so that we can base some decisions and/or some staff analysis on, that we can then help the Planning and Zoning Commission make an informed recommendation to you all, and then you can take that recommendation and then all the supplemental information and form, I guess, a decision that's best for the entire community. When you are dealing with land use matters, it can get a little emotional at times, and so what we want to do is try to provide the facts and as much information as possible. This is not to preclude someone from submitting. We are not looking for complete construction engineer drawings. We will be asking for preliminary site development plans, which could be done by a landscape architect. It could be done by an applicant if they had the wherewithal to put on there the requisite information of, you know, general location, general ideas of setbacks. All of the, I guess, details of construction will be handled by Lonnie's department as it goes through the plan review process. We have utilized and anticipate on continuing to utilize Lord Patterson Lee to aid us in some heavy lifting when it comes to some plan reviews. So all that to say, I wanted you all to see the application that we currently use. We are not necessarily replacing this application. What we're basically saying is, if someone comes in, and whether they're kicking their tires on doing something, or whether they are wanting to submit to be on agenda, this is the information that we will be seeking from them in order to be complete. If the information is not submitted to us, we will not process it and move it forward in the process until it's complete. So just wanted to make sure you all are aware of this. I think it's something that is good, that's in keeping with some of the measures we're taking with the zoning ordinance. So I think in sequential order, we're continuing to make sure we help control and manage all the growth that's coming.
Thank you, Brandon. Dr. Proctor, Councilman Raffield?
Mayor, Counsel, the only question I would have on the checklist and application here would be item number 10. The relevancy to that, the nature is completely different. Would that be common practice for other municipalities? Or Mr. Siphon?
Number 10 is required by state law that they got to provide a statement of campaign contributions. So I just see that as a reminder that, hey, we could have had that form, that's why it was state law. And every county and every city that I'm aware of has people fill out that campaign contribution form.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I do want to say that I sort of see this as a work in progress that, that we'll allow and see how, what we need, what information y'all need. We may modify the checklist, and also sometimes federal and state law requirements change, like for annexation, you used to have to, under federal law, get preapproval of an annexation because you were changing the city's boundaries, and so you could be adding citizens to the city that would change if you had, like, voting districts. So it used to be you had to jump through that hoop of getting the Justice Department to approve annexations or find that they would not have minority voting rights. And I just wanted to relate a concern to you, President-elect Biden coming into office, they may bring back some of those requirements by executive order that we haven't had to deal with in the last four to six years. But the important point is, we're going to modify this over time to provide the information the Counsel needs, and also give a checklist for the administrators that we've got everything y'all want to bring a rezoning or an annexation before.
If there were a change to this checklist, would it have to come to Counsel for approval? Or is this just more of a Counsel voting on the original document?
I would think, Mr. Siphon, based on the language in the zoning ordinance, this would not normally even be before y'all, but because there's been nothing like this ever done, I felt it was a good practice to at least have this initial buy-in and directive, that then over time, you all would just entrust us to make the necessary modifications, as you've done through the zoning ordinance.
It's up, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. As a member of this committee, I think- As a member of this committee, I think it's important that I express what I think this document ought to do, and this is a result of some of the issues that we've come up against over the last two or three years, quite honestly, where we were put in positions to make decisions over things where we had no information, or very little information, or we were being presented the need to make a decision on something that technically would not even meet the criteria of our ordinances. And I think it's very important that the staff understand what our ordinance is saying and what leeways they have. I think it's important for our planning and zoning and also council to understand that even though we may have the capability for making approvals on things that don't meet the criteria of our ordinances related to zoning, we are putting in a much more clear pathway, if there are things that developers do want that don't meet our zoning, we can, they can address those through different processes. Staff has some leeway in some of these areas, and then there's also a variance process. I think the other thing is, it's important to realize that some of these questions that we're asking may be of relatively private nature. For instance, is this going to be, what are we going to use this property for? I think we have to be careful that we, that we make every single annexation or rezoning contingent on a project when that is not necessarily the case. There's one obvious case that stands out where that led to trouble, and in defense of ourselves, different era, different leadership, different legal representation, but those are just some of the comments that I'd like to make. I think the more communication that we have with the applicants, either with staff or with people who need to make these decisions, the better it is, and this affords us quite a bit of information to rely on, to understand what the nature of the project may be, and then possibly even without, can't make decisions before we vote on some things, but at least we can help guide the process and make it a more cooperative and communicative one. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. So any comments from other people on council or of interest here?
I make a motion to reapprove the, what do we call it, Development Department Application Checklist for Rezoning and Annexation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and further comments being made, then I would ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. As an aside, I will say that although Brandon did not have to submit this to us, I'm glad that he did, because all of us will be a part of the public process when people contact us and without going through this and say that they want something done especially for them, then my response is going to be, you know, have you satisfied the requirements of our, of our development department? And have you gone through, wanted to see what can be done? And if not, then they'll need to go back and do that again.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, even though we are often accused of showing favoritism, most of these things that we're acting on tonight, our planning and zoning laws, this document are actually working in quite the opposite manner, which I think is the intent of myself and the rest of council. We want, we do want to make this a clear and concise opportunity for people's success.
Exactly, and fair to all. Item D is consideration approval of municipal court judge service agreement between the City of Jasper and for January through December the thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. I also think that Judge Sneed has done an amazing process with what he has done this year, and everyone seems to be incredibly satisfied with the way that he runs his court. So I would entertain a motion at this time that we approve his contract for this coming year, twenty twenty-one.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the service agreement between the municipal court judge and the City of Jasper.
Need a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And Judge Sneed is reappointed. Item M is consideration approval of municipal court prosecuting attorney service agreement between the City of Jasper and Joseph Hudson for appointment thereof for January through December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So we're going to reappoint as our prosecuting attorney, Joe Hudson. I would entertain a motion at this time that we approve. His contract.
Aye.
At motion and a second, is there any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And Joe Hudson is reappointed. Item F, consideration approval of municipal court public defender service agreement between the City of Jasper and Courtney Stewart for, for January through December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And we have a wonderful person doing this job that I have heard nothing but good, good talk about in our community.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the service agreement between Courtney Stewart and the City of Jasper for the public defender service.
Have a motion, do I have a second for this twenty twenty-one appointment?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, and the motion carries. Item G, consideration of approval of ETC service agreement for Appalachian Water Tank for Data Relay to Water Treatment Plant. And we will ask Lindsey Williams to bring this to us.
You'll find in your packet an agreement we have, we currently have an ETC, and they provide our phone service, a phone line that relays information to our water treatment plant, and we're just asking if you'll please consider renewing that for three years, and that's their standard contract is three years. And then, we currently pay thirty-six, forty-five a month for this service. I don't know. It may go up a little bit in three years' time, but they do offer us a good discount on this service.
Okay, council, I would entertain a motion that we approve consideration of approval of ETC service agreement for the Appalachian Water Tank for Data Relay.
I make a motion that we approve the ETC service agreement for the Appalachian Water Tank.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item H is the consideration of approval of agreement for Development Services between the City of Jasper and the Pickett County Chamber of Commerce. And Brandon, if you would, bring this to us, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council and for the public, you may notice that tonight there is a lot of housekeeping or first-of-the-year action items. This is no exception. This is an annual agreement that we enter into with the Chamber of Commerce, just to formalize the relationship. So beyond that, the agreement is the same as was approved from last year. We merely updated the dates, and Mr. Siphon did see an error in the, some wording, but beyond that, I believe all is in proper order for your consideration.
Thank you, Brandon, and council, I would entertain a motion to consider approval of the agreement for Tourism Development Services between the City of Jasper and Pickett County Chamber of Commerce.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just mention to you and the council that it's possible for the council, by way of ordinance, to change the amount of the motel and hotel tax, which would help both the Chamber of Commerce, and it would also help the city, you know, to help the chamber, because they'd get a little bit more money to promote tourism in the city and within Pickett County. It would help the city, because the city would get a little bit more money to use for general fund purposes, but you can assess a tax up to eight percent now. You just have to amend your ordinances to do so, and, you know, I don't know what the current rate is, but most people, or at least some entities, are under the eight percent. So I just wanted to give you that information and for y'all to think about, and, you know, and we can talk about whether at a work session or at the retreat, you know, whether we need to change the motel hotel tax a lot. So I just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you. And let's, let's table that until we do have a retreat, and that gives everybody time to think about it, if that's okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment real quickly?
Of course.
So David is absolutely correct, but I will share that several years ago, as part of this transition that we're going through, we had the opportunity to meet, meeting the chamber, as well as two members of the council, with the Tyler Renagle, who is the Department of Community Affairs representative that oversees hotel motel tax. Based on what Dr. Renagle told us, based on the way our hotel motel tax was originally chartered, if we were to change the percentage to eight percent, there was some reason why Tyler felt like it'd be better for us to leave it just like it is. And the reason, only reason I'm putting that up is for the information to pass along to David, so that he can explore it from that venue in advance of our retreat.
Thank you, sir. So now, I've gotten lost here. Have we voted on this yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Item M is consideration approval of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero one to amend the Germa insurance policy to add firefighters' cancer policy, and I'll let Beverly bring this to us, if you will, please.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was having some technical difficulties. We are required by law, it was passed in two thousand seventeen, to have a rider on our policy to add cancer coverage for our firefighters. So I failed to do that when I got the Germa policy, and Stella brought it to my attention, so I asked for a quote, and it's attached in your packet. We have twenty firefighters, both full-time, part-time, volunteer, that are required to have this coverage at no cost to them. The annual premium is fourteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and the resolution to add this is included in the packet. And I ask that we approve this.
I make a motion that we approve this.
Second. Have motion and a second to approve the addition to our Germa policy for the riders' cancer policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item J is consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero three for establishing the twenty twenty-one municipal election for the, with establishing qualifying fee thereof. And I have bringing this to us, Beverly to start, and David Siphon as needed. So Beverly, if you would, please.
I think I'm going to let Mr. Siphon elaborate on this. He has been wonderful to get us an ordinance. Basically, we are required to adopt this and have it, have the fee established and advertised by February first. So we'll need to have a first reading and a second reading.
Thank you, Beverly. One thing that I typically do for cities that I help is help with elections in that there are a lot of procedural rules with elections that your election superintendent has to follow, and as you may be aware, at least every other year, the General Assembly changes election provisions. So it's something you've got to keep up with and try to implement in order to hold your elections correctly. What the statute says is that the city council has to publish by February first of this year, since we're having an election this year, the amount of qualifying fee, and which means that the city council has to set the qualifying fee. If you're paid a set salary, for instance, you get, as an example, two hundred dollars a month, irregardless of the number of meetings that you attend, then that's a set salary, the qualification fee has to be three percent of that. If you're not paid a set salary and you get paid by the number of meetings you attend, with some months being three, some months being two, some months being one, then the statute says you've got to set the qualification fee in an amount up to thirty-five dollars. So it could be thirty-five dollars or less, and my understanding is that traditionally the fee has been set at thirty-five dollars. The other thing that I typically try to do with the election ordinance is start getting information out to the public, both to the city council and to the members of the public, where we can run our elections in an open and transparent way. So we've done this election ordinance, and since this is sort of new to y'all, I didn't have an ordinance to go behind for you, so I used my standard form in developing this, but I need to go through it with you, because I have some questions, because I was unsure in, you know, it was the holidays, so it was hard to get ahold of people, exactly how y'all have done elections in the past to do this election. So hopefully you have before you the election ordinance, you know, section one, I'm just putting a title to the ordinance saying it's the election ordinance for the twenty twenty-one election. And then section two, by state law, the election- the election is held on the Tuesday following the first Monday in November. So when you, twenty twenty-one calendar, um, the first Monday in November is November first, which puts our election on November second. Um, but in section two, I have my first question for you. Um, most of the cities I represent have their elections at City Hall. So I put that place of election in as a default. And I subsequently learned that Pickens County, the local board, has been nice enough to help, um, handle our elections in the past. And, um, and that they have a different voting location. And Brandon mentioned too, the possibility that the, um, work we're doing to, uh, create the new municipal court area that we could also hold elections there. So my first question and is to give some direction from y'all about where do you want to hold the twenty twenty-one election? Do you want to hold it at the Pickens County, uh, voting precinct is set by Pre- Pickens County? Do you want to do it at City Hall? Do you want to do it at the new municipal court area? Um, so I was needing some guidance that we may need to change that location so that I can plug in the right location for the council to pass this on February first.
David, would there have to be, uh, early voting on this provided?
Um, I traditionally have inserted early voting. Set out the dates, but I did not do it this time because as you know, um, there's been a lot of, um, discussion about early voting and advanced voting and absentee voting. And, um, and members of the General Assembly, uh, had made comments to indicate that they might change the rules on that. So I left early voting out of this ordinance with the thought that if they changed the rules on this, you know, it, it wouldn't violate the ordinance.
And well, and, and I understand that, but the reason I ask the question is that adds another location. If indeed, uh, we have to add early voting. They, uh, have, uh, now started having early voting at the rec department rather than the elections office. And then I wanted to make sure you realize that while the elections office has been running the election force, the location has been at City Hall.
Okay. Well, if the actual place of election on Election Day has been City Hall, then the ordinance as written is okay, except, uh, Brandon had, um, raised the possibility that we might want to do elections at the new this court location so that there would be less disruption going on at City Hall during Election Day. Um, and, and.
Hold a hold. Yeah, go ahead, Kirk.
Uh, if I might, uh, Mr. Douglas, do you have an update on the project there and estimated timeline?
Uh, meeting with the contractor last week or the week of Christmas, uh, they indicated that they were probably gonna begin around February, the first of March. Uh, they are finishing up a job. Um, they have been advised, they received the go-ahead. So I would not foresee there being any problems in meeting the November deadline, even if they got started in March or April. Because the build-out in and of itself should be ninety days at, at max.
So one quick question would be, uh, for the last, I don't know how many years, the, uh, the county has run our election. So are we talking about us running our election instead of the county?
No, I believe the difference here, Mayor, is strictly in the location, not the personnel on-site. Personnel would still be through the county elections.
Personnel still be, okay. And then the other, the other part of that question would be, uh, but will the voters think about, uh, going somewhere else?
I think if it, if we. Besides the fact that it, uh, helps operations, uh, at City Hall, uh, the new site will be able to give a, uh, uh, a more ADA accessible area for the vote. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I think that's as important to us as, uh, as change. We're gonna have to make sure people realize it's been moved.
Oh, yeah.
And somebody unhappy about it, uh, but, uh, we are providing a, a more accessible location in my thought.
I agree. I think the advantages to, to moving it is outweighs the disadvantages of notifying people for sure.
Mayor, probably, uh, recently this week, it was announced in Cherokee County, south of us, that there were some emails received, um, that were not specific to Cherokee County. Everyone around the state, as far as elections, received some of these. Um, there were some possible ill regards towards elections and this location would be, in my opinion, a safer location due to the nature of what's housed there. So, uh, the safety is also another factor besides the ADA compliance, which is a positive.
Thank you. David, what else do you need?
Okay, I'll make that change then for the election to be at the, uh, court ready. I wanted to bring to your attention in section two, they provide now for election by plurality vote. And what that means is that whoever gets the most votes for a post between two or three candidates would win on Election Day. Uh, so it would, uh, change technically that you wouldn't have to have fifty percent majority plus one in order to win. Um, and an example would be you have three people running the seat. One gets three hundred votes, the second candidate gets three hundred and ten votes, and the third gets three hundred votes. The candidate for three hundred and fifty votes would win even though that candidate didn't receive fifty percent of plus one votes cast. So the ordinance provides for plurality vote and, uh, that would be a bit of a change. And I wanted, uh, to get feedback from the council about, do you like that? Do you not like that? Do you want me to delete that? Um, I was needing guidance from you about how you felt about it, which one to do.
Counsel.
Mayor, if I may, right now, when you fill out your election paperwork, um, it is required that you place on that paperwork which post you are running for. So I did not want there to be any confusion that, um, your post would not be dictated on the paperwork. That is required by the. Fill that out.
Okay. And as to the plurality, uh, Kirk?
I, uh, I think plurality is the way to go.
I also agree with that.
Okay.
And just to respond, Kirk, the next section, section three, um, you'll see that it sets out, um, all the offices that have the same title, which are the five council member seats. And, uh, and everybody told me y'all had posts and somebody could tell me what your.
Which one?
What? So I just arbitrarily did one through five. Uh, and, you know, if somebody knows what the correct post numbers are, I can make those changes easy. Uh, but if you don't care, then, you know, I just arbitrarily did one through five and gave each of y'all a first number so that when you go to qualify, uh, you know, both you, if you run again, and any other candidate has to designate posts they're running for. Um, and that's allowed by statute also.
So can I take post three and not have to run again till twenty-four?
Well, no, uh, uh, I'm afraid you're up this year, Dr. Proctor.
Uh, Mr. Sifin, to answer that question, if my memory, uh, is correct, when we were filling the paperwork out for the elections officials at that time, uh, previously and historically, you would put the individual's name, uh, which currently sat or used to sit on that seat, rather than the post. So as far as my knowledge, I do not know of the numbers at all, nor does it matter to me.
No, Kirk's correct about that.
Yeah, I've, I've never seen a post on any of it. It's been exactly what you said, Kirk. It's whoever's position you're running against.
If, uh, if somebody wanted to come up and question the post numbers, uh, there's absolutely no basis for it. Uh, I think having what, uh, you've, you've put in the ordinance is good and, uh, let's move on.
Okay.
I agree.
Um, then the next things I have is it sounds like to me y'all are saying that y'all are fine with Pickens County helping us and therefore whatever Pickens County determines for the place of qualifying and, um, and the place for absentee ballots and early voting is what's going to be, here those are.
It is. You are correct.
Okay. Uh, well, I'll get with Pickens County and be sure that the ordinance is correct by the time y'all vote on it on February first. Um, the next question we have is section five, which is qualifying period. The council has a choice. You gotta have a minimum of three consecutive days in a row to qualify, but you have the option of having either four consecutive days or five consecutive days. So it can be either three, four, or five. As written, the ordinance only does three days, Monday through Wednesday, beginning on August sixteenth and ending on August eighteenth. Um, so if you'd rather have four days or rather have five days, uh, I would need to change the ending day from Wednesday to either Thursday or Friday. And just wanted direction on that.
Well, some start.
Wonderful. I, I'd go with three. The only thing I have is lunch hours. Will you verify that that is in, uh, with the elections office, that that is the correct time?
I'll verify the lunch hour.
I'm good with three.
I agree.
Three? Is it in?
Yes, I agree.
John, did I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear John says?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
And then the next is section six and, um, my understanding is I've always paid thirty-five dollars for the qualifying fee, so I just put in thirty-five dollars.
And that's good.
Thirty-dollar I'll give you that. I can do it. Now if you're coming up here forty-five, I'll give you over thirty-five.
The one question I would have on that, the thirty-five dollar fee, does the city elect, uh, I'm sorry, City Hall, someone there or someone at the county elections collect that fee?
The county would collect the fee, uh, if they're handling qualifying. You pay that fee at qualifying.
Okay, that brings the question up for me. In section five, it says the, uh, place of qualifying shall be City Hall. So I guess we would need to change that to the elections office.
And, and we would, that's, I had mentioned, um, that's the council had indicated they wanted to continue to get help from the election office. So that is one thing you're right that we'll need to check.
My memory may be wrong. I believe when, uh, I had paid the historically, I actually paid that through City Hall. I am not positive that I paid that to the election.
Just when I last did it, uh, last year, it was through the elections office.
I paid through the elections office also.
Yeah, I did too.
Thirty-five dollars. I remember it well. I thought how cheap it was.
On a bargain.
I did not know how expensive it was going to be.
You didn't know what that thirty-five dollars was gonna cost you, did you, Steve?
No, I had no idea.
And, and then the rest of the ordinance just tracks, um, uh, state law. Uh, I will change, uh, where it's talking about that the administrative office, uh, at City Hall for the election superintendent for purpose of qualifying. I'll change that to the correct office, uh, with the Pickens County election board. Um, and I think that's here, um, we will.
Excuse me, David. You're talking about, I had a, um, under section seven, you're going to change that to the elections board?
Um, yes, certainly. I was gonna change that to the election.
Okay.
David, do you want to vote, uh, on this ordinance along with it, uh, with the changes so that we can have a second vote, uh, before February first?
Correct. And, um, Brandon had proposed that we have a very, very short, um, special call meeting next Monday at six, being Monday, January eleventh to just pass the second reading.
And I'll, I'll make a motion. We accept this as the first reading with the changes that have been discussed.
Second.
Have motion and a second to accept as the first reading changing to the, uh, uh, changing our municipal election in your Jasper. And, uh, any further discussion by council? Favor, please say aye.
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 Foe, same. Motion carries, first reading. Uh, okay. Consideration of approval, releasing or writing off existing utility accounts outside the statute of limitations. And we'll let Beverly bring that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of, uh, we just went through our, we just had our year end, uh, December thirty-first. And part of getting ready for an audit is running reports and looking at your aged receivables and, um, also looking at transitioning to our new software. We've been going through a lot of questions and providing information. And it allowed us an opportunity to take a good close look at what we have as far as the old debt. Um, and I propose that we write off some aged debt that cannot be collected because it's outside the six years of, um, collectability. And as far as I know, we haven't done that. Uh, because we've got some, we've got some accounts as far back as two thousand and seven that have balances. And I would like, uh, permission from council to go ahead and write those balances off. Um, I did consult with the auditor and they are in agreement that that is a good policy and would like your permission to do that. and would like your permission to do that.
Can I make a motion that we approve to write off the balances?
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Both same. Write them off.
Thank you.
Uh, committee reports, uh, development committee, that will be council members, uh, Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Rafio.
Um, I'd just like to say that it's, uh, really exciting to be, uh, in a position, uh, soon to have a new, uh, electional ordinances. And, and despite some of the frustrations that are going on right now in this transition, I think it's very remarkable that we are actually engaging in a interactive process, uh, with potential projects. And I think that's, uh, kinda hard to believe that we'd be where we are today. And, uh, just thank y'all for your support and look forward to another great year.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. Uh, council member Rafio?
Uh, Mayor, council, in reference to this particular committee, um, I, I appreciate Clark Patterson Lee. I appreciate everyone that's helped us with what we've been going through. Uh, it's very time consuming and, uh, against all the rumors that may or may not be floating in a community about development and what's good, what's bad, um, the bottom line is that this committee and this council and CPL are dedicated to making a, uh, level playing field and being fair for everyone. And I, I appreciate everyone's hard work.
Amen. Thank you, Kirk. Streets and Parks Committee, that would be council members Ann Snavy and John Fast.
We're really excited about this next year. We've been working with Clark Patterson Lee on some designs for the parks. Very excited with the progress that we're getting. We're working together with the community and with the, the county. So I think it's just awesome what we've got coming in this new year.
Thank you, John.
I agree.
And thank you, Ann. So good.
If I, um, I, I was actually at the city park, uh, a few days ago and just wanted to give a shout out and a good job to the city employees who were maintaining the park. New playground looked great and the area around it looked great.
They're doing an absolutely great job, no doubt.
Thank you. Administration Committee, uh, council members Jim Looney and Ann Snavy.
Uh, I do have a request and I'll make it in the form of a motion, uh, that, uh, council ask, uh, staff to start working with the city attorney on updating the city charter and reporting to council, uh, uh, when, uh, maybe a timetable on, on thoughts when this could be accomplished.
Okay. So we have a motion to move forward with, uh, uh, addressing our, um, uh, what did you say, Jim, we were gonna be doing here?
Working on the charter. City attorney on updating the city charter.
And, and that happens to be one of the things I wanted to do that month. So you see the smile on my face here?
I, I think there's gonna be a lot of smiles on faces.
I think there are too. So, and Ann, did you second that?
I did, and, and I think that we're, we're all in agreement on that, on working on this. So we should go ahead and apologize to Mr. Siphon before he has to attack it. But thank him for all his hard work.
Yes, I agree. And, uh, uh, any further discussion by council?
I have a little, I have a small question about potential costs and, and realistic timeframe for that as it relates to the need to double for House of Representatives organization. Can somebody clear me, clear, clear some of that up?
Um, I'll jump in here and, uh, Brandon can add. Um, to get a new charter, you're absolutely right, Dr. Proctor, that we'll have to do it by way of a local act, uh, brought forward by our local legislative delegation. Um, typically, um, what happens is that, um, administration and myself, uh, with guidance from the council, will develop a proposed draft of the new charter and, um, and the council, uh, you know, when we, uh, have revised the charter with everything that y'all think is needed in the charter and, um, will have you approve that final draft by way of a written resolution. Um, and then we'll send it to, uh, hopefully, uh, uh, one of our, uh, local legislative delegation that is fine with helping us, probably Representative Jasper. Um, so the first step is coming up with a charter that addresses all of your concerns that, uh, the council can pre-. Um, the second step would be for y'all to approve that, approve a formal written resolution, approving the new draft and asking the legislative delegation to drop it. The good news is that for other cities, I have done new charters. So I don't have to build one from scratch. Uh, I have a feel for what the council is looking for. So I think, um, I can have a first draft for you pretty quickly, um, that y'all can then have something that you can look at and find too and help me get it to where you want it. Um, so I am hopeful that after the current meeting, we'll have, you know, something that y'all can approve. You gotta run a legal notice, uh, the week before it's, uh, submitted in the General Assembly. Um, the good thing about a local act, and this may be obscure, but in the General Assembly, they have what's called crossover day, which is usually about day twenty-nine, where if an act's gonna become law, it's gotta pass one, uh, of the chambers. You know, it's gotta either pass the senate or the house. Well, local acts are not subject to crossover day. So, you know, as long as they drop it day thirty-three or so, we still can get it passed this session. Um, so I think it's doable that we get it done. Um, and I hope to have for y'all, um, uh, uh, an initial draft pretty soon that y'all can start thinking about, yeah, giving these prescriptions for improvements. Um, and that we can get all this done by February first, I hope. Um, and that may be more detailed than y'all wanted to know, but if you got other questions, let me know.
There's more detail on some of it, but it was less detailed on the other. The cost, um, I mean, potential costs, is it, doesn't sound too bad, but it'll be the.
I, I think if, if I may, uh, Dr. Proctor, uh, we do, the fortunate part was, uh, Mr. Siphon did keep his hourly rate the same as last year. And when we were anticipating on the twenty-twenty-one budget, uh, although we hope not to have to spend as much as we did last year on legal, uh, we did account for, uh, some, uh, legal costs that we hope will be offset by our, uh, relationship with Burma. So some of the personnel and some of the legal suits, uh, if they're before us, uh, can be diverted to Burma, which is kind of a free service with legal counsel. Uh, that would then free up Mr. Siphon from a city attorney perspective to help with city business like this proposal, um, we do. If that helps, you know, in terms of, uh, cost. Uh, the other item that I think, um, from an administrator's perspective, I would be inviting Mr. Siphon to, uh, the retreat. And I have not put anything out to you all, um, but I am looking at a possible date of January twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth, but Thursday, Friday, the end of the month, to kinda go over through the agenda, items for the retreat. Um, and I would hope that we could, still Mr. Siphon away from the office, kinda already have him, him then to, uh, help with some of the costs and maybe feed him a sandwich to, uh, drive down some of that cost too.
Um, I don't think the cost will be, uh, all that bad 'cause, um, I won't have to build the charter from scratch. I've, I've got a charter on the word processor. So it's taking that order in trying to, um, revise it and address concerns that related to me by the council. Um, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to delay it because of costs. It's the most important thing we could possibly ever do. Um, but it hadn't really been done in, um, forty years. So, um, I'd envision we could have one in a month. I, I, so far you haven't led us astray, David, that I know of, so I appreciate it. Well, and, and like I said, the, the good thing is I don't have to build it from scratch. Uh, I just gotta take what I have and try to address concerns that y'all related to me in the past about the charter. And, um, so I don't see it as requiring a substantial amount of time. Uh, and I feel pretty comfortable that I could get something that everybody can look at in a week or so. Um, and, and so, you know, that'd give y'all like two weeks, three weeks for feedback before February first. And, you know, and if it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer. I think we got time 'cause we don't have to worry about crossover day. Um, so I think it'll be a reasonable cost that we can, um, uh, do in a reasonable timeframe 'cause my impression is y'all have pretty strong opinions that are consistent with one another about what you want. So I'm not expecting, you know, that it's gonna take y'all long to, to give me guidance.
Well, just for a little bit of historical perspective, this same meeting, January of two thousand and eighteen or seventeen, actually, uh, this subject came up and, uh, Jim said, you promised them we're gonna be working on it. I'm sure they all, they all remember that meeting very well 'cause we didn't know each other very well and they, um, I think I, I think we, I think we dropped a little bit of a grenade in that meeting. But here we sit. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Ju- just quickly on that topic, while doctors and attorneys talk about money, um, looking at the public, we are a community of the public, our stakeholders in our community, uh, my opinion deserves input on this. This is a very important piece of our organization, how we're going to operate, how our structure is, what our standards are. Um, that engagement on the public's end could be something as simple as town halls, uh, whether they're electronic or in person, surveys, mailers. There may be, uh, the want of public engagement on something of that size.
Look, we'll take that under consideration, Kirk. Thank you. Any further, any further discussion? At this, at this time, I would entertain a motion that we move forward with, uh, having, uh, our city attorney start on the preliminary for a new city charter.
Yeah, I think we have a motion and a second, don't we?
Go ahead.
Call the vote.
All in favor, please, say aye.
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 Both same. The motion carries. Water wastewater, council members John Fast and Dr. Sunny Proctor.
Well, we had a, uh, not all I had to say is we, uh, we had a committee meeting last month. Um, I had, um, I wasn't able to stay the entire time, but I think the main topic is an exciting one. It's, we talked about updating our metering, uh, processes to get the, uh, modern, uh, version of, uh, meters to the very near future. Um, hopefully, uh, timeframe Brandon put on that was possibly late next, uh, well, late this year now. But, uh, that's very exciting. And, um, yeah, that'll be a fairly large, uh, undertaking, but, uh, move us into modern times on, um, our, um, water use and possibly, you know, some realistic improvements, uh, though possibly big improvements, uh, in our parent losses. So anyway, it was a good meeting. John?
Yeah, I agree with Doc. Uh, we, we, we talked about how we were gonna improve the system and help, uh, save water. That's, that's savings to our citizens that's not going to waste. So I think we've got a good plan for this year. And I wanna congratulate David Hall on doing an excellent job and all the people with the water department and thanking for all they do.
Thank you, John. Police and fire, uh, that would be council members Kirk Rafio and.
On our end, I believe we have a tentative, uh, facility tour coming up and that is all that is on my radar at the moment.
Uh, I did talk to the chiefs and, uh, uh, they are carrying on. Your notice in your package, report from, uh, both Chief Level and Roper. Uh, they've been busy this year. Uh, and, uh, I think, uh, right now we carry on and, uh, Kirk is, uh, uh, right about, uh, the, uh, tour coming up. Uh, look at some facilities and, uh, hopefully we come up with a plan for consideration in, uh, in this year.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, financial report, we'll ask Brandon to bring that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I took the liberty of, uh, making sure my name stayed on this so I had a chance to speak tonight since, uh, it's kinda been a little silent, so. Uh, nonetheless, that means we should be out of here by nine o'clock now that I'm speaking. So, uh, nonetheless, um, I wanted to, to possibly give you a, a year-end summary. Uh, but talking with finance, I felt like it would be better to have the month of January just to solidify some numbers. Uh, so in your packet, uh, and what's displayed is, uh, last month. Uh, I will give you some, uh, tentative numbers, unaudited numbers. Finance always wants to make sure that, you know, there are things that change. But overall, um, I've kind of put the disclaimer out there that I'm just the city manager, not the finance. Uh, so if I'm wrong, it's my fault. Uh, but ultimately had a, had a pretty good year, uh, all things considered. We did, uh, finish pretty strong. We lost, um, we do intend to, uh, hit our amended, uh, budget, uh, and probably exceed. Uh, that's a good thing. Uh, at the time when we amended our budget, we brought that, uh, loss receipts, projected revenue down. Uh, you can see that we had a receipt of one thirty six and some change. Uh, that's good though. Uh, but we still have to be conservative in our approach because as you can see with the TVT, uh, we still ga- gang to lose hundred and fifty plus thousand a year. Uh, as that trend continues, uh, instead of two hundred plus a year, we're getting probably seventy something a year, uh, with TVT. Uh, building department, uh, I would like to congratulate Lonnie. Uh, officially, you all did, uh, basically appoint him as department leader over that department, uh, April, I guess, last year. Uh, and, uh, I will tell you that as the year end, uh, they'll have received over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that is quite an accomplishment. It does give you, uh, a little bit of insight into how busy they have been. Uh, and also Lonnie being able to, uh, secure monies from all persons. So it's what y'all have indicated in terms of consistency and fairness. Uh, you come in to full permit, um, bear the associated fees. So, uh, beyond that, um, if Lindsay and, uh, Beverly is on board for any specifics, uh, lost and splashed, uh, are in your packets. Uh, and, uh, that's all I have to say on that. And, oh, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna say it. So, uh, just because I think it's important, that is, um, it is important for the community to know that you all, uh, were able to, I think, take a otherwise, uh, strange and unprecedented year in pandemic, uh, giving council, I mean, giving staffs direction. We'd anticipate on using about four hundred and eighty six thousand dollars worth of fund balance. Um, a lot of the, uh, issues that went on during the budget process was predicated on the fact that, you know, we wanted to be mindful of continuing to provide services to our constituents. But yet realistically, what is the cost to operate? Uh, so that four eighty six number, we do hope that, uh, when the everything shakes out, all the revenues and expenditures are accounted for, uh, we will have probably used between two hundred and two fifty, uh, worth of fund balance. So, uh, going from projected four eighty, uh, down to around two, two fifty. Um, and just to give the general public a, an update, you know, December, um, engine two had an issue, uh, at the fire department, uh, radiator issue, and that's an eight thousand dollar repair. So things happen and we have to still conduct business. But, uh, you all do a good job of leading us and providing us the resources and we want to be good stewards of it. Um, so I'd like to commend y'all and the staff again for, uh, holding steady. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, Lonnie Waters, would you give us a development report?
Okay, for the month of December, we issued, uh, eleven building permits. That's a total of three hundred permits for the year. We conducted twenty nine stolen erosion permits and inspections. And we did a hundred and twenty two on-site inspections. And, uh, we also had, uh, six planned reviews. And we conducted about five pre-construction meetings and, uh, discussing, uh, future growth and future projects here in the city. And I'd like to also thank Shawna and Ian. They played a big part in making the federal department, as I said, this year.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie. And, uh, Brandon, we have, uh, um, fire and, uh, police reports that have been given to us. I don't know if you have anyone on standby to deliver them.
I, I don't, uh, Chief Lovell, um, as much as he would love to, uh, be here, um, he does not know how to do Zoom and I don't want to put him through that, uh, scrutiny. So, um, the, the report is there. I do want to just call your attention. I think, uh, Chief Roper may be online and he may give his. I just want to look at the, the twenty twenty total calls. Um, there's about, uh, you know, twenty-four hours in a day, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Um, eight thousand, seven hundred plus hours in any given year. And when you look at the total number of calls, uh, when you look at the, uh, answered calls for services just from number one, uh, when you look at some of the, uh, the other things, um, there, there is a lot going on in public safety in both the police department and the fire department. So just be mindful of that as we continue in twenty twenty one. I think it's gonna be, uh, ever important to continue to support. Uh, this is a vital part of our organization. Uh, so beyond that, uh, you can, uh, look at some of the activity.
Okay. Let's see, we're to that point where we have that, uh, magic request for, uh, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
In a second, please.
Second.
Everybody to be together, all in favor, say aye.
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 And we're gone. Thank you so much. Appreciate it from everybody.
Thanks, everybody. See ya.